Before we continue, the work session for the Wycomico County Youth and Civic Center Revenue will be postponed to a future council meeting. And next, we have the proposed Community Cat Regulation. So we have Susan Coleman, Director of the Community Cats Coalition, and Kim Noack, Director of the Wycomico County Humane Society here. You ladies want to come forward? You can sit right at the table.
Hello.
I think you would introduce yourselves.
I'm Susan Coleman.
You're gonna have to get close to the microphones.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you bring that closer to you?
Susan Coleman from the Community Cats Coalition.
And I'm Kim Noack, the Executive Director of the Humane Society of Wycomico County.
Okay.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna let Susan talk first, since this is her expertise, and then I'll talk a little bit about the Humane Society and how this affects us.
We wanted to come before the council tonight to talk about the...
Can you?
I can't hear.
Take that mic and bring it over.
Yeah, right up to you like this.
As close to you as you can.
Sorry.
I will.
Okay.
Leave them closer if you want.
Really? Okay. We wanted to come before the council tonight to talk about the Community Cats. We're working closely with Kim at the Humane Society. When Animal Control gets a complaint, they go out and round the cats up and they're bringing them in to Kim. We're taking them out and getting them fixed and vaccinated and putting them back at their sites.
Okay.
And we just wanted to get verbiage put into the law stating that once these cats are fixed and vaccinated, and we ear tip them to identify that they have been fixed, that they'll be left alone and that they cannot be re-trapped again. And by taking these cats out of the shelter system, they're not being euthanized, they're not being killed, because rounding these cats up and killing them, it's not working. It hasn't worked in decades. We practice trap neuter return, and that way the colonies get stabilized, no new cats come into the area, no new kittens are being born, and that decreases the population, because our number one goal is to get these cats, the numbers down, because there's some people complain about them, we understand that, but we do not want them trapped and killed.
All right.
And we're trying to say, we offer a free service, we come right out, we'll trap them, fix them for free, and bring them back. That way, we keep them out of Kim's shelter, where she has to pay every day to feed and clean and take care of these cats.
And when she's speaking of Animal Control rounding them up, she's speaking of City Animal Control rounding them up. Our county Animal Control Officers do not go out and trap cats. We do rent traps out to the public, that they can trap themselves, and in the past, when they've been brought in, every feral cat pretty much has been euthanized. We've had no outlet for them. So when I started in August, our live release rate was 54 percent at the shelter. I have it up to 87 percent right now, and that's solely due to working with these organizations and them handling these feral cats as opposed to us handling them. And we also have a lot of grant money coming in for low-cost spay and neuter, and we're encouraging people who bring in the feral cats to allow us to fix them and release them back on the property. But I think there's a big crossover of resource. If these organizations are coming in and spending the money to help the community, help the county, and then we have those cats brought in to us, and we turn around and euthanize them. So what we're basically asking for is that there be something added to the code, and the only thing that's in the code right now is the definition of a Community Cat. We would like for it to be added that a Community Cat cannot be brought into the shelter, or if it's trapped, it has to be re-released.
So you're saying the only ones that're bringing them in is the City of Salisbury?
Yes, they're the only ones that trap. County Animal Control does not go out and trap feral cats.
Have y'all approached them?
Yes, multiple times. I actually asked for a meeting between city and county. We sat down and we talked about it, and we're trying to get all on the same page, but apparently there's some higher-ups that are not on the same page. They feel like this is a service that they've provided for the city in the past, and they're gonna continue to provide it, but it is a burden on the City Animal Control Officers to have to go out, because you have to humanely trap. And humanely trap means you constantly check those traps. You do not leave them sitting unattended. So, you know, we're trying to help them out, and then, of course, you know, they bring them in to us, and then we have no resource. Now, if they're ear tipped and fixed, we know that they're part of a TNR program, and so we do our best to try to locate what colony they came from by talking to these different groups, finding out who the caretaker is, and making sure they get re-released into that colony. But in the city code, the TNR program has to be approved by Animal Control, and then any release of those TNR cats has to be approved by Animal Control. Well, that's all very time-consuming, and City Animal Control doesn't always know exactly where these colonies are located. There's also a reason for that, because we had a situation in the past where they had permission to release cats behind the Coles Building, and I don't know if you remember, but City Animal Control Officers were coming out and destroying everything that these people were working for. They were destroying their housing, they were flipping their food over, their water over, and they had permission to have a colony on that property. So that's...City Animal Control Officers have vocalized to me that, you know, they want to work something out where they're not having to go out and trap these cats all the time. These cats are of no danger to the community. They are vaccinated, they are not gonna reproduce, and if you leave them where they are, they will naturally keep the other cats out. We've also developed a huge foster program, because we're getting ready to go into the cat season, where we are gonna have cats stacked in our shelters. We will have litter after litter after litter brought into our shelter for us to try to get adopted. If they're kittens, we can do our best to get them adopted, but many times, just being in the shelter situation, we can't keep them healthy. So we're actually working with foster parents to take them out of our shelter situation and keep them at home until they're healthy enough for us to bring them back in and get them adopted. So there's lots of things that we're doing to try to help this situation, and we value our relationship with these different cat organizations, but it has to be in the code somehow where people, you know, have to leave these cats alone, or we're just wasting resources.
So, I have a couple of questions. If somebody in the city calls and complains about cats, the city goes out and traps them and takes them to you, and you take care of them, fix them, or whatever you wanna call it, you release them back to where the city captured them at?
They release them back to the...most likely, if they're a TNR cat, if they have ear tip, that means they've gone through a TNR program. That means they are being overseen by a caretaker and a colony.
But what I'm saying, do those cats go back...somebody's complained because they're there.
Yes, they would go...
So you take them and fix them, and you take them back to where the people were complaining?
Back to...well, here's the other issue. They are pulled out of their colonies by people feeding them outside of their colonies. If people are more educated about how this works, and they stopped feeding them from their back doorstep, these cats would not pull from their colonies, they would stay where they are. So this is really about education. We have to figure out a way to get the public to understand all the different things that they need to do to work with these people as well.
I'm gonna ask you one more time.
Yes.
Do they take the cats back to where it was trapped from?
Not necessarily back to that specific location, but back to the colony that's...
So they put it out along the street or somewhere like that?
It's an approved colony. It's part of a TNR program.
We go door to door if someone complained, and we're trying to work with Animal Control, that if you get a complaint...we have one lady complaining on one set street. So my other partner, Joy, went to that lady, and we knocked on the door, and we explained the whole process, that by calling Animal Control, that cat's gonna be killed, and these people don't...they didn't understand that. They were like, "Oh, we don't want the cat killed." And then we explain trap neuter return to them, and if they really...if the cats are really a nuisance, which they can be, we have devices that we give the person for two weeks. It's a little device that you stick in the ground, and it emits a high-pitched noise that only cats can hear, and it will keep the cats out of your yard, and we give that to them free of charge for two weeks. There's a number of things, we have brochures to teach them how to keep cats out of their yard, but nine times out of 10, people don't understand the whole process and what you're doing, and if that group of cats is taken out, another group's gonna come in, and the process is started all over again. So by fixing that cat, the whole colony, and putting them back, it prevents more kittens from being born, the colony eventually will die out because there's no more kittens being born.
Understanding how that works.
Yeah.
But I'm just...I just...
Not necessarily at that exact location, but in the colony that's close to that location.
We find the caretaker. These are healthy, they're not sick. We understand there are some cats that are very sickly and inbred and carrying, you know, things. These cats that Kim...we've been getting from Kim for the past three months, I've taken 168 cats out of her shelter, and we fix them, they're fat, they're healthy, someone's feeding them. We are going door to door, knocking on doors, to find these caretakers, so that we can work with Animal Control to let them know, "Hey, there's a colony right down the street. Yes, this lady's complaining, but give us her name, we're gonna go chat with her, give her our brochures, inform her, and put the cat back in the colony, and then we're gonna find the colony caretaker and tell her...tell them, 'We're fixing these cats for you.'"
And according to code, they are allowed to be free roaming. So domestic cats are not allowed to be free roaming anymore, but TNR cats that are part of a TNR program are allowed to be free roaming. So technically, these cats can be picked up, brought in, and then the caretaker of the colony can come and take them right back out. You may have a resident who has chosen to TNR cats onto their property. They have every right to come in and reclaim their cats back. So it becomes an endless cycle of expense for us. So that's why we're trying so hard to work with these different organizations. And we've seen...you can see the figures. We've gone from having a 54 percent live release rate to having an 86 percent live release rate. I think when people are educated and it's explained to them in that manner, they're gonna make different choices. They're gonna make a different phone call. Instead of calling City Animal Control, they're gonna call Forgotten Cats or Community Cat Coalition or one of those organizations. And, you know, there's also a possibility of funding. I mean, we have the ability to get a lot of grants for this kind of work, and the county has the ability to fund this kind of work as well, because ultimately, you are benefiting your community. And as much as we get bashed for our euthanasia rates and all of that stuff, people just don't understand, we can't just stack cats up in the hallway.
You do know that we can't make codes for the city?
I understand that. I understand that. They have meetings with the cities. Well, we have to try to all work together in some manner between myself and these different organizations, and I understand that you guys are not the county and the codes are not the same.
We are the county, not the city.
I mean, you guys are the county, not the city, and the codes are not the same. We don't go out and do those things, so...
And just for example, I've taken the 168 cats, and if it's costing her $100 per cat to house those, and she has to hold them for three or six days...
And the cost of euthanasia, and the cost of cremation, and the cost of all of that stuff, I mean, that's $16,000.
And where are these cats coming from? The city?
They're coming from the city. Most of them are coming from the city. The biggest portion of them are coming from the city.
Their cats out in the country are smarter than we thought.
Yeah, they are. And I don't know, maybe people just aren't bothered by them, because there's more room, more space.
Kim, you're doing really great work, by the way.
Thank you.
Really pleased with everything that you're doing there. And as Coleman, we appreciate the work that you're doing for your coalition. I guess the question is, and I've read this, I don't know why the original Animal Ordinance Committee didn't include more, there's only three references to cats in the entire ordinance, so...
There's basically a definition.
The definition and two other comments as far as cats are concerned. And so I think, you know, what Anna Rundle's done is great, and it's always good not to reinvent the wheel. I have a personal question, though. What happens if you have a community that has, you know, is just completely invaded by feral cats, and let's say they've all been clipped, they've all been neutered, everything else? What happens, especially, I guess, with you, if the neighbors call and say, "There's still 13 cats outside my front door, aren't you guys gonna do anything?"
Yeah.
How do we address that as a county?
We have to find the caretaker and see if we can get all the friendly kittens or cats taken out or removed, which we normally do at the time we're trapping them, but we have to track down the colony caretaker and see what the situation is, why are these cats roaming that far away from their colony?
And many times, it's because someone near that person is feeding them, and it's pulling them...
That's what you're calling the care...
Caretaker.
The caretaker is actually a person that's...
The caretaker is the person that feeds the colony.
And keeps an eye on them, and they'll call us if there's a new cat that shows up.
A responsible person.
A responsible person for the colony.
Dedicated caretaker.
Yeah.
Well, so what happens? I mean, what enforcement is there if this is a problem in a neighborhood with cats, and you go to the caretaker and say, "Hey, this is a problem"?
So they're also gonna go to the community, to the houses around that area...
Right.
...and educate them on what not to do, how to deter these cats from even coming to their property, because most of the time when they're leaving the colony, it's because someone outside of the colony is feeding them. Everybody sees the cats and they feel sorry for them, and they put a little food out on their back doorstep, and then before you know it, they're actually causing more harm than good. They're pulling the cats away from where someone is taking care of them.
So you have a process in place for educating...
It would be passing out brochures in that area, it would be knocking on doors and talking to people. We try to educate people when they come into the shelter the best we can. Now, you're always gonna have those people that are like, "I don't care, I don't want the cat on my property, and I don't care if you kill it." You're always gonna have that. But most people are reasonable, and if you can explain to them that what you're doing is going to be an endless cycle of your life, you're going to spend your time trapping a cat here and there and dragging it into the shelter and us euthanizing it, and then by the time you get back, you're gonna have another cat, or you're gonna have another cat that's had a litter. To call one of these organizations to come out and mass trap, fix them all at one time is the key to getting it manageable.
Right, and I understand, I just hope the biggest calls that any of us are gonna get, whether it's dogs or cats, is, "How come I keep calling the county and nobody does anything?" So as long as we know there is a...something in place, a policy in place to address those concerns for re-releasing them, yeah.
I mean, you guys...
Can I say something?
You'd have to...you can come up, you certainly may.
Sure.
And I think it would also include education on your website, and, you know, educating people, if you have a problem, this is who you need to call.
Right.
There is nothing written in the law that says an animal control officer has to come out and trap a cat. You know, you guys can make that determination if you want to. Certainly, our county Animal Control Officers do not come out and trap cats. We don't trap squirrels, and we don't trap raccoons, but the city has a wildlife license. That's the other thing. A feral cat is basically considered a wild animal. We don't have a wildlife license to trap, the city does. They trap raccoons, possums, feral cats.
And why don't you have that license? Can you get it?
I have no idea. I've only been in this position since August. I don't know if I can get it. I don't know if I want it. Why should the county come out and trap raccoons and possums? That's their territory.
We're not talking about that, I was talking about cats. I wasn't talking about raccoons and possums. You said, "Troll cats are considered..."
Do you want that expense added to the county budget?
Yeah.
Because that's gonna be a huge...
I just asked you why you didn't have that.
No, I'm saying, I'm sure that we probably could apply for one. If the city can get one, I don't see why we can't get one, but that is gonna be a big added expense to the budget in animal control officers going out and doing cat trapping.
Mr. Dodd, could I just make a couple of comments? Yeah. One of the reasons there isn't more in the county code, kind of addressing Mr. Cannon's question, the language that was in there was proposed by the committee, if you'll remember, that revised the code, and then we tweaked it some, and that was actually their suggestion. And I think the main thing is, it's also mentioned in one other place, and that is in the abandonment of animals. And returning a TNR cat is not deemed to be abandonment, if you take it back to where you got it.
Right.
But addressing the concern and the issue, I don't think that the language from the Anna Rundle County Code is gonna make a wood of difference, for two reasons. First of all, you've indicated it's primarily a city problem, and we can put anything we want in our county code, and the city can tell us to take a hike if they want to. Hope they don't do that, but they can. And the other thing is, it's primarily an education problem, and I mean, putting something in the code doesn't educate anybody. Nobody I know sits around reading the county code at night.
Speak for yourself.
Yeah. I had it on the shelf in my office for many years, and I rarely read it, but the...so I think that really the problem needs to be addressed maybe in some other way, and just to put a lot of language in the code, that really isn't gonna do much of anything. I mean, in some ways, I think it might actually be counterproductive, because right now, and I'll give you a personal example, my neighbor and I, we get stray cats where we live and take them in and give them a shot, get them neutered, you know, sometimes they become domestic cats, sometimes they don't. And, you know, to hit a person with all this verbiage, and say, "Now, if you're gonna do it, you're gonna have to read all of this," I just don't think that's...I think that's gonna actually be counterproductive. You don't really need any language to do the TNR. There's nothing in the state code requires anything in the county code at all. I mean, you can do it. And as I say, when we changed the law two years ago, we did put in, just to make sure that nobody would be accused of abandoning an animal, and that's why they did that, but I mean, it's wide open. And if the city is the problem, I mean, I was gonna ask earlier, I mean, have you talked to the city council and the mayor, and they're just telling you to take a hike?
No, we have a meeting with them on March 16th.
Yeah, I mean, that, I think, is the root of trying to address your concern.
Bob, do they already possibly have the authority? Because if you look at Section 133.2, at the very bottom, it says that a program...it says, there's a definition, it's called a Trap Neuter Return Program.
Yeah.
And it specifically says, "A program approved in writing by the Animal Control Authority for humanely trapping, sterilizing, vaccinating for rabies, ear tipping, and returning Community Cats to their original location." So this already, to me, sounds like it already gives you that authority, you just have to have a program that's approved in writing, and I guess it would have to be approved by this body.
I don't think there needs to be any...I mean, I don't know why there would need to be any legislation. I mean, I can look at that further, but I don't see why.
It's already in here, and it's saying that...
It is, and we don't have those approvals, and that's the other thing, it says it in the city code as well, and they don't have those approvals.
So maybe as opposed to rewriting the entire ordinance based on Anna Rundle, you might be able to take Anna Rundle's verbiage and create your own program, and then the council could approve that or amend it however they might see fit, possibly?
But that's not gonna do anything.
It's still not solving a problem with the city.
It needs to be the city, see, I mean, that's...
Excuse me, Sue. We have it in the county, too. We have issues in the county.
If you're gonna speak, you do have to come to a mic for the public. You go to the podium if you'd like. Huh?
I said, "I have a very strong voice, I don't think..."
You can go to the podium. It has to be recorded.
Okay. I'm out in the county. My name is Aunt Carole Martin. I have Westside Animal Rescue, and my background is in PhD in zoology and animal behavior. But to speak to the county problem, if this body doesn't do something from the county perspective, if you have to think of it this way, here's the county, the city's within the county, so if the city does something and the county is...they're at odds, you're gonna...we're gonna have...it's just gonna be a nightmare, okay? There has to be at least some fundamental basis on the county level, and I think you're absolutely right. If it's already been, let's not reinvent the wheel, let's use the verbiage. And as far as verbiage, okay, I'm out in the county, I'm in Annacook, I'm about out as far in the county as you can get, okay? And so my...I see it all the time, and people out there don't read the code, but you don't have to read the code to know, if it's in the code, that if there is a cat that has been ear tipped, as part of, we call it a managed colony, and this is where I've been for the last 15 years. So somebody calls me from Waterview, because I'm in Annacook, and they say, "There's 10 cats I'm feeding in my backyard, and they're not neutered and they're not spayed." So I go out, and we trap them, we get them neutered, we get them spayed, we say to the people, "Do you want them back? If you don't want them back, we try to find..." and I do adoptions. If they do want them, they're, "Oh, yeah, no, we're willing to feed them, I just don't want mine to go to 90," okay, which is, I agree with. So you take it back. That now becomes a managed colony, that has a caretaker, the person who was feeding them before, who's been taking care of them, is now willing to continue taking care of them, except now they're not breeding, they're not reproducing, they're vaccinated, they're clean, okay? If there were kittens or anything sweet from that, we try to get them adopted. If there are some that are older, and we don't think they're adoptable, but the person is willing to continue to take care of them, that now becomes a managed colony. But we have the same problem in the county that people have in the city, except we're a little bit further apart. Except out in the county, the solution often is not to pick up the phone and call Kim, the solution is, "Well, just take my gun." And I've lived there for almost 20 years.
Where they trap themselves.
Okay? Where...no, they don't trap themselves, that takes too much time.
No, we have a lot of people that are trapping themselves.
Now, you do, but before, they didn't have traps. The local...your group didn't, not you, it was before you came, Kim, but I had traps, and if I could say to somebody, "I'll give you a trap, and I'll come and I'll check your trap," and blah, blah, blah. But I've had people move into the neighborhood and call me and say, "I've only been here for two or three months, and there's a bunch of little cats in my backyard, or cats and a mother cat with kittens," and my neighbor said, "Oh, hell, just put a saucer of antifreeze out. Or you got a big deck in the back, you got a gun, just sit back there." And these people call me and say, "I don't wanna be shooting a gun off my deck, I don't wanna kill these animals, I have children, I have animals myself, this is not the solution I want, I don't wanna put poison out." So they need to know that if these cats are ear tipped, and they've come from a managed colony, or they're ear tipped and they've been taken care of, that it is illegal to sit on your deck and shoot them, or put poison out, so that your neighbor's cat, who is a domesticated cat, can wander across the yard and get into your dish of poison. And that's the problem in the rural area. I mean, it's not as much a problem, because we have bigger space, so the cats have more places to roam. In the city, the problem is, they don't know that this boundary is your neighbor's yard, and this boundary is my yard, where I am a managed colony. They don't recognize that, just like raccoons don't recognize it, and bears don't recognize it, and deer don't recognize it. So out in the county, we have more space, but we still have the same problem, and that is that those groups, like myself, and by the way, all these people you see sitting back here, this is being paid for out of our pockets. The amount of donations we get, you could put on the head of a pin. And so since I've been down here, and I was, you know, I had a healthy 401K when I came down here, it's gone, because most of the people that you see back here, when we do the trap neuter return, we're the ones that are putting the money out. It comes out of our pockets. And then we put the cats back in a managed colony, we have a caretaker who's willing to take care of them, and because the cat wanders into somebody's backyard, they pick it up and bring it to Kim, and now the money that we spent, the time that we spent, it takes a lot of time. You set traps, you have to go out every four or five hours to make sure that there's nothing else caught in the trap, somebody else's cat that has a collar on it. And you do all that, and then you spend the money, and you get it done, and you have this healthy cat that somebody's willing to take care of, and then you find out that it's in there, or...
Which you guys have made legal to be free roaming.
Right, right.
Okay. We're running over time, and Councilman Hayson has a comment, we're probably gonna have to reschedule another work session.
And we probably need to schedule with the city as well, because honestly, that is the majority of the problem.
And I just would say that I don't think the Anna Rundle County Ordinance addresses the problem that she's been mentioning. I mean, if somebody pulls a gun out and shoots the cat, I don't think that really addresses that. I think we may actually have something in our ordinance now about that.
We do, we do have laws against poisoning as well.
So a lot of this is kind of hard to change just by writing some laws.
Counselman Hayson's.
Kim, and I say this to Susan or others, but do you have data...you mentioned briefly $100 for a cost for keeping a cat, and then eventually you said $16,000. Do you have specific numbers when it comes to like a per-cat cost of what it would...
That's what the average has been calculated, just in general, and that would vary. The city would probably be different than county, because we're not physically sending Animal Control Officers out to do the work. physically sending animal control officers out to do the work.
A hundred dollars per cat, roughly?
Yes, it's been, it's been documented in other studies, is, is the figure that they've come up with.
And do we know, and then I guess taking that a little further, how much money is this, trying to put it economic...
Well, I mean, just since I've been there, we've sent a hundred and sixty-eight cats with, instead of euthanizing them, with Community Cat Coalition. So, that's basically saved sixteen thousand dollars. And, you know, the whole no-kill thing is just, is so big right now. We want our figures to be respectable. We, we want to be respected by the community. We cannot be respected by the community if there is not some sort of regulations on us killing mass amount of cats.
Okay. And just one last question to point to, to your questioning, Kim's answer. Most of the people here go to a variety of conventions every year. And at the last convention Sue and I went to, Sally Cats Ally, there were seven or eight representatives from major cities there, from all across the country, from San Diego, wherever. And they had figures over a three or four-year period of how much money was saved by going away from trap and kill to trap, neuter, and return. And some of the figures are astounding. Now, you need to do your homework, we need to do our homework, need to collect the data, you need to know what you're talking about. But in some cases, we're talking, depending on how large the city and how many, millions of dollars, thousands of dollars a year that are saved, that you're not, the taxpayers aren't paying, to redo repetitive work.
And unfortunately, because I am fairly new to my position, and as you all know, things were not handled very well prior to my getting this job, it's really hard for me to go back and pull data, because I've actually found complete discrepancies on the amount of animals that we even took into our facility. So I wouldn't even want to try to do it with the, the figures that I have been left with. So I, I have tried to document as far as what these organizations have helped us with since I started.
Okay, well, Kim... Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna answer his direct question, that's all I want to do about cats. Nine times out of ten, if you have an established colony, they keep out other cats. It's just the way it works.
They keep out other cats?
They do, they do. They may let one or two in occasionally, but for the most part, a stabilized colony will keep out, will keep strangers from coming in. It's just the way it works.
Okay, thank you. I think we've got a lot of work ahead of us.
Yeah, I know.
And I appreciate you for introducing this to us, and I thank everyone for what you do. I'm surprised my sister's not sitting out there, I'm glad she's not.
They would welcome her help.
But anyway, we'll be in touch with you. I have Laura, you can contact Laura after you work out something with the city and get some ideas what they're doing, because it does look like we've got a lot of work ahead of us.
It's not a quick fix.
No, but, but thank you all.
Yep, we appreciate your time. Thank you for letting us come out.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you again. So next we have the electrical board. You all, yeah, bring an extra chair up if you'd like. Now there's four seats.
How you doing? You got old Alan up here.
Can you, can you make this out of fifteen minutes? Okay. Gotta get tired.
Everybody, everybody says that, George.
Okay, you all would introduce yourselves?
George Lanning, ex-officio, president of the electrical board for Wyomko County.
Rick Wheeler, vice president of electrical board.
Alan Carter, secretary, electrical board, Wyomko County.
Brett Calloway, member-at-large.
Yeah, well, it's, the reason, I guess, we're here, for all intent and purposes, is initially, is because of planning and zoning's desire, I guess, they're kind of bringing themselves on to trying to micromanage what the electrical board was doing. This all happened about the time that one of the inspection agencies determined that they needed an additional person on staff. So, we have a process that we go through, and it's been set forth since nineteen sixty-seven, when the board was actually put in place here in the county. And of course, when it comes to any applicant, it's up to the board discretionary to look at their, I guess, their criteria, to see if they're suitable candidates. And we even have the point to where we could have them test. So, this one individual apparently didn't wanna do that. And then we had people coming in from planning and zoning, sort of trying to tell us that maybe we should look the other way, maybe we should do something different, try to give this guy some latitude. So, it ended up, I was asked to remove myself from the board. And, and there was even some, we had even asked for counsel to come in, and of course, counsel didn't have really any background, experience, any knowledge, and he said so upfront. He didn't under, he really didn't have any idea what the ordinance is for, for the electrical board.
Excuse me, what are you talking about?
The electric, um...
County attorney.
County attorney, excuse me. Yeah, so, anyway, he was, he was about useless, as far as any benefit from the standpoint of giving us any input, because he didn't know. Ignorance is no excuse, I guess, in that respect, because it would have taken him maybe, especially figuring it from his, his ability, being an attorney, it would probably take him about five minutes to be able to figure out what little bit, about two or three paragraphs is there are in the ordinance for what we're, what we're supposed to do. Regardless, it ended up that we were kind of, felt like we were being kind of pushed, coerced into allowing this guy to get his license. I was asked to step down, so I had no say, input into whether or not the guy got his license. He got a license.
Excuse me, Mr. Lanning, I'm sorry, did you, was it in a license to be an inspector or to be...
Inspector, yes.
An electrician, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Lanning, just real quick, was this the individual that planning and zoning said came from another county and they were required to approve? Or is that, or was this another instance?
Well, no, this is a similar, you know, similar, or same instance, I guess. I'm gonna give you kind of just a brief outline of how things are supposed to be done. In order to become an electrician inspector in the county, you have to go through the state fire marshal's office, you have to get their certification. After, once you get the certification from the fire marshal's office, if they have a license in some other county, typically the electrical board will allow for certification. This individual had no license, he did not have a current electrical license with the state, he didn't have a current electrical license anywhere. And he had only his state certification from the fire marshal's office, which he claimed with his supervisor was equal to or better than what the electrical board licensing would have been as far as testing, which is not true. But regardless, he managed to buffalo his way through with some of the people from planning and zoning, and they kind of really kind of pursued it, which we took issue with. And then we were more or less told in some uncertain terms that we were gonna be schooled on how we were supposed to operate the board. And we took issue with that as well. Since we've been operating, I mean, I've been on and off the board for the past thirty-three years, I think I've got a pretty good idea how I was supposed to operate. And of course, we even had people coming from the state that listened to us from the, like, well, not the ethics, but they came down from Annapolis, there were three people came in and they listened to us and said there wasn't any problem from the way we were operating and holding our, our board meetings. So nothing's really changed over the years. But, yeah, we were just, we were just hoping to make sure that we were on target with the way we were operating the board, that planning and zoning doesn't really have that much authority over how we operate. Is, is that correct assumption?
You're, I'm just looking in the bylaws.
You gotta speak up.
Looking in the bylaws, who is, who's the administrative support for that, for your board?
I'm not sure. Frankly, I thought we were only responsible to the, to the council and to the county administrator.
Executive?
Executive, yes, at this point.
See, that's the finance director.
George, when you were saying that planning and zoning, are you talking about our staff or planning and zoning board?
Mr. Holloway, can you speak into our microphone?
You don't have it.
Are you talking about staff in planning and zoning or the planning and zoning? Personnel. Personnel. I got a question about Mike. Was anybody's safety put at issue with this?
Well, let's put it this way, electricity is unforgiving. Electricity gives, doesn't usually give you any second chances. In the construction industry, if someone does a really crappy job of construction as far as carpentry, you know, maybe the doors don't work right, maybe you have leaks around the windows and things just don't work well, maybe you have settling. If you have a bad plumbing job, you probably get leaks, you know, just more inconveniences. But if you have a bad electrical job, you end up with the potential for people getting electrocuted or even fires. So, I would say, yeah, at this point, from a couple other issues that we've got to resolve with the electrical board, the same individual that the county has been put at risk. So...
So there, so there has been follow-up with this individual, and inspections done on things he's done and approved that's not proper?
It's not been, yeah, it hasn't been done, it wasn't done specifically looking at him. It's just, as things have progressed over the past almost year now, since he's been approved to have a license, one particular project came up at the airport, and another project has recently occurred, it actually took place back in July, or sometime between like, I guess, March and July of two thousand nineteen. But it was brought up again, and there's another, another, the same individual was involved in the same, in another project, and there's some considerable problems at that location as well. So, yeah, but the board is going to address that, we didn't wanna bring that up here.
So, the inspectors, the, the electrical inspectors, they're, they're contracted by the electrician, and are there some companies that are paid by how many they approve?
My understanding is that it's in the state of Maryland that they're allowed to have a, I don't even know what the word is.
Compensation?
Yeah, but this...
For approvals?
Yeah, commission.
Okay.
They, they can work, they work on a commission. So, in Delaware, it's not, it's not acceptable, but I understand here in Maryland that it's an acceptable practice.
Not in every county, though?
I'm not sure. It's, I think, you know, it's, it's just in Maryland, I don't think each county has any discretionary of that specifically. At least it's not written in this one.
So it looks like the legal counsel is the only administrative staff appointed to their board, to your board.
So, then with planning and zoning, as far as any of the staff members that would come in or try to tell us that we were doing something incorrectly, or even from the attorney's office, and that would be...
The county attorney. And with, with your bylaws, it says that the administrative staff is legal advisors, which should be, the county attorney shall act as a legal advisor to the board.
Okay.
And render such legal assistance as may be necessary.
As long as they understand and know what you're speaking to.
Yeah, I think you have a valid point there. You would wanna make sure that, that even if Mr. Wilber, I would, I'll point out Mr. Wilber, because he's the county attorney, or as such. If the county attorney may not be aware of it, you know, he does have the authority to seek legal counsel from someone who would be more, more, more versed in electrical law. So he would have that authority. I, I wouldn't think he would take it upon himself to try to make a judgment call if he doesn't know anything about that particular field.
Well, the code actually says that.
Right.
The code actually says, yeah, he shall act as legal advisor and shall render such legal assistance as may be necessary.
Right, so...
She needs it.
So in, in recognizing that there may be an issue, and I can see where you would have concerns that maybe they didn't seek additional advice, is that what you're saying?
What, what ended up happening is it always, it got to the point where he was more or less siding with the company that was wanting to bring in the other inspection agency, saying he couldn't understand why we wouldn't just go ahead and give him the license. And we found that there was a lot of, a lot of questions was brought to, brought to this particular individual. He told us he was wanting to operate in only two counties, Somerset and Worcester. And we found out after the fact, after he was asked if he'd already been tested in any of the other counties, and he had indicated that he had not, and we found out that he had, prior to coming to our county and even making an application.
Well, concerns such as that, you can address, it's probably the only department that we had, that the council itself has any flexibility. If, if there's an issue with the county attorney, you can address that, you can address it through a letter or however you choose, to the executive branch and to the county council, and we both can independently try to resolve that matter with the county attorney.
Well...
Just here, now...
Well, hasn't, hasn't you already, though, you already sent the letter, right? I mean, we have the letter right here. Isn't that, isn't that the same thing, or?
Well, we're, we're in a situation, too, where Mr. Wilber is, you know, sort of operating as the county attorney, but not, not really, we're, we're trying to get the executive to appoint another attorney.
The biggest gripe, the biggest gripe we had with, with the, the council was, is that he didn't seem to have any understanding of what our ordinances were about, and he wasn't rendering any real opinion as far as what we were asking for as legal advise, advice, as to how he was going to handle, you know, we were, we wanted to be able to vet this guy.
Right.
Like we normally would. And in most cases, most of the people that come in here as wanting to be inspectors are coming from another agency or with another agency that are already established in the county. But this guy had no license, he had nothing really with him except for the state fire marshal's certification, that's all he had, and he's expected to have a license.
How come planning and zoning, in their response to you, specifically said that the individual had a valid license?
They didn't call it a license, and they were just more or less telling, pushing us, nudging us, shoving us, saying that we should go ahead and give it. They, I mean, they alluded to the fact, I guess, they were primarily concerned about lawsuits, because that had come up on an occasion, apparently, I mean, I even think with Mr. Wilber, said that he had already been in a few lawsuits with the county, and they were trying to avoid lawsuits. Now, I really don't give a crap about a Fartan lawsuit when somebody's license is taken.
Well, would it be too late for the council to send a letter to the executive branch to say that planning and zoning may be misevaluating this, this license, and at the same time, try to address the issue with Mr. Wilber?
Well, I don't know about that, because we've already had a discussion with Mr. Culver, and Mr. Culver said maybe there should be a, a real, real adjustment of the electrical board.
I understand that, too, and I, I recognize that mishap. But I'm just wondering whether or not you would, you know, we could at least, you're asking us to play a role, and I'm, I'm trying to, those are the roles we can play.
Yeah, 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 yes, sir, anything, anything that would be a benefit, to try to bring, bring it back to where the board was, where it was operating, without having to worry about somebody looking over your shoulder saying that you don't know what you're doing, and they have no clue themselves.
Maybe we can, maybe we can get a letter to the executive saying, we, you know, we have concerns over this suggestion that there may be a, a, a misevaluation of this, of one particular individual. We could also address the issue that Mr. Wilber, I guess, in the interim, might seek other counsel.
With expertise.
So you're, you're just looking for an attorney that would have expertise in this field to give you direction?
All right, well, we, we could do that. The other two things is that the online education, planning and zoning says that you can actually, you do have that authority, you can approve the online education programs. So, because I guess your concern was the fact that they, they may not be...
Typically, typically, they would bring, just like with me, we'd bring in the course for approval. So, the board looks at it, they evaluate it, they approve it, and we do this, and it's the same thing. Whenever they're, whenever they're brought to the board, submitted to the board, and we do the approvals. However, if it's just kind of like a blanket, and there's ten thousand online education programs out there, and who's going to say which one is gonna, because none of them have actually made application to the county?
Are you saying they go to planning and zoning with...
I don't know, they typically, typically, the people that were gonna do the online education, provide the online education, submit it to, to the electrical board. We do the evaluation on to it, because we're, we're the people that actually are doing how they're doing the work.
They don't get a statewide approval? They don't go to the state?
Well, that's the problem, the state apparently is approving some of these continuing education courses, but I can't imagine how they can even keep up with however many courses are out there.
I just know most, I mean, industry, I'm, you know, I mean, we have to continue education, but it's all, the counties don't do it individually, the state does it.
You do it online?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, that's what, for my license, I do it online, but it's the state approves what, what organizations...
Physicians could even do C online. Surgeons could actually even do it online.
Yeah.
But the state hasn't approved...
Part of my license is online, too, but the state of Maryland requires these programs to be approved by the state of Maryland.
Yeah, but that, there was another, the other part of it, and we had that discussion with Mr., I can't think of his name, he was here tonight.
Young?
Yes.
Young, Weston Young?
Yeah, we had, that was Mr. Young, and just, you know, who, how, how is it, how do you know that that particular person that's taking that online education course is actually that person that they claim to be?
That can be with any online program, school.
As I understand, I understand today that there is one application, apparently, that they do use the cam onto you. that they do use the cam onto your, on your computer to watch, and if you get up and walk away from it without saying something, then it kicks you off and you get to start over again.
Yeah, I'm big on bricks and mortar.
So.
Sounds like maybe you just need some expert or more specific, I guess, legal counsel to tell you, to give you more direction.
I like John's idea, sending the letter, and that'd be a start. So are you saying that you would want to provide planning and zoning a list of accredited, which you consider accredited online?
We would like to see a list. We would like to see the list of online education courses that are looking to be approved.
You, you want some consistency within the county where they recognize only accredited online training?
Yes.
There, there was even times that the, uh, planning and zoning had attended our meetings, our electrical board meetings, and we didn't have a problem with that, but they, it seemed like they wanted to take the electrical board over, and, and we were, we feel like we're doing the great job.
You were appointed to do the job.
And, and we have the experience between all of us, years, many years, and, and they were just stepping on our, we felt like they came in and wanted to tell us how to run the electrical board.
Well, maybe we could put a letter together and the council would approve the letter by, by consensus, uh, recognize, I guess the only other issue is the time constraints, whereas you were saying you didn't have enough time to deal with the five thousand some changes that may be in effect, and they responded by saying there is no limitation as to how long you have to take to, to, to codify it.
We were understanding that, uh, the way that it's written into the ordinances is that as soon as that, um, the NFA seventy becomes effective, as soon as it's published for public, that it's supposed to become law. If that's the case, then that would mean this past January, that would become the law. Of course, it's not actually, nobody's actually able to even get copy of the book until about October.
Now, I was saying with, as Bill said earlier, isn't there some state guidelines as to what, when you have to, I, I use the term codify, when you have to codify it locally and?
How does each county, uh, adopts the K? There are some counties in this, in this, uh, state that are still on like the ninety-nine.
Yeah, I, I think you probably just need some, some legal counsel that can give you direction on how to proceed.
This county's not going to approve the, the codes until October two, twenty twenty-two. So you're working with twenty seventeen right now.
Okay.
So you have time.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, that, that part is, that part is not so much of a problem, but we, obviously the understanding that it was, uh, that as soon as it became effective that it was law. So that would have meant, that would give us only about a two and a half month window at best to put any material together and get any kind of educational, what these five thousand or some odd changes or its annual or every three years.
Right.
To try to, uh.
What would you, what would you think that you would suggest that the council could do to help you on that?
Well.
We can't supersede state law, but what, what would you think our role might be to help?
We understood it to be the, the county that was, was the actually put it into the ordinance, so we were just looking to say that the county at least have some kind of communication with the electrical board as far as having any kind of change, as far as, um, adopting.
Are you looking for an amendment?
Not if, not if this is the way I'm misunderstanding it. I mean, you're, it sounds like that you're saying we're like three years behind on to a code change, or two years anyway.
Well, the state of Maryland does theirs every three years, and then the city and the county follows suit about a year later.
Okay.
When they make their, when they adopt.
You're adopting everything together.
Yeah, all, this, the building code, the electric code, everything.
Yeah, well, it's working like that, but I'm, I guess, I, like I said, I was still understanding that it was the way that was written, that we'd immediately had to start utilizing that as the mandate, the law, the land for the electrical K, and that really would put a lot of people on the right to try to catch up with that.
Larry, is that, is that, is that next year you're talking about, is that just sort of ad hoc, or is there something specific? The Fire Marshal's Office adopts this code every three years, and then typically the county will do it about a year later. Typically.
With electric.
Is that typical, is that? They, they don't have to adopt every single code, not the, they have the building code, the fire code, the electric code, they don't have to adopt every single one. They can use the old code, like you said, somebody would use nineteen ninety-nine. But I think the county does what, exactly what the state does.
Yeah, but it's under, I think it was a subsection one thirty-eight-two amended in two thousand and six, that indicates that the National Fire Protection Association being particularly the current condition thereof and the whole thereof herein after referred to as the national electric K and the same as hereby adopted and incorporated as fully as set out in length herein from the date on which this chapter shall take effect. So does that mean, yeah, excuse me, does that mean that, um, as soon as that K becomes effective, that we are supposed to start implementing?
So does the county adopt it.
Okay.
Sounds like we just.
If they buy their code, it makes it automatic, it's already done, the, the county, the council doesn't have to take in it, it's already built into the code.
There's a lot of legalities with electrical inspections, I just defer to it.
It's interesting, it's, I was one of the, uh, experts that George also helped break the state code, the showmaker, said, tell me they did not do simultaneous adoption?
If you could talk to the microphone.
Typically, they don't.
And enforcement, on the first day of the code, it is promulgated.
Because we have to learn all the updates.
I want to go back to the issue of safety, and you were talking about, um, because I think this is a concern, this should be a concern of the citi, the camp, this council and the citizens of the county. You said there was, um, two issues, one was at the airport. How was that discovered? Uh, Mr. Carter, um, he just had a, a contract out there to do a work onto changing out the service equipment onto the old air, uh, terminal, and there was another company that had come in and put in a, uh, transfer switch and supplied a generator for that particular project. And as he was, uh, his people were in there doing some of the work, they discovered that there were some, um, apparent problems as far as the way that the wire of the generator was wired. The individual that had come out and done the work actually had not gotten a permit to do the work. He had a license, but he didn't have a permit. He said that he was told by someone, some administrator, somebody out at the airport, he didn't need to get a permit for that work. So.
So, yeah, that sounds, that sounds par for the course.
Yeah, so, it, anyway, it was Mr. Carter's people that saw it, I, he'd contracted with me with, through the permitting process to come out and do the inspection onto the service equipment, which I had saw, is what I saw, you know, uh, inside the transfer switch. Uh, similar, similar, uh, problem, not a problem, a similar situation out to Kwood Drive, there's another contractor onto this job, you know, he called me and asked me about coming out and looking at it. So it was under invitation, it's not like I'm chasing these things down, uh, but it's typically, I'm, I'm, I guess, being on the electrical board, I'm the one that, just the vague guy and get to be the policeman with the whistle and no ticket book or, um, I just got the siren and yell and that's it.
We know you're the best, so that's what we're talking about.
They didn't give you a badge. They didn't give you a badge.
I've known three of you sitting here, the other gentleman I don't know for many, many years, and, um, I don't think you would be trying to chase people down and cause people problems that, um, your business has been pretty reputable over the years, and I don't think you'd be trying to chase people down just to cause them problems.
Yeah.
And I think you have the best interests of the citizens at heart, and I appreciate you all coming forward and, and bringing this forward. It really disturbs me when you tell me that story about somebody said they didn't have to have a permit, you know, so that's.
Well, we, uh, the electrical board represents the county and the public.
Right, you're appointed.
And, and any decisions that are put in front of us, we, we look at very hard, um, and we take them serious. So, um, we, we saw issues with the inspector, we, we, we didn't feel he was, um, a good applicant at the time, and we rejected him. And then, all of a sudden, planning and zoning gives him a license, so.
And it was this inspector that had the problems at the airport?
Yes.
Okay.
And I was put in charge to make the final decision, and I told Mr. Dwyer, I don't know how to pronounce the name, anyway, if he met all the, if he met all of the requirements of Waukesha County for the inspector license, he could have them. To my opinion, he did not meet all the requirements, because all of his continuing educational credits were not up to the current date, they're not even close. Last one he sent me was, uh, two thousand and eleven, and your credits are only good for two years.
Do you have a standard process to follow up with, uh, you know, when you go to reject someone, to say, here are the, here's the reasons why, um, and?
We were, this was all of his credentials that he presented us to, to achieve his, uh, inspector license. And when Mr. Landon was asked to step down because they felt he was being biased and to.
Who asked him to step down? You don't have names, uh, what, the county department?
Landon, asked him to step down because they felt he was partial, and that's all due to the guy, the gentleman that was trying to get his, uh, license. And then when we brought him before with this airport issue, he started bringing all that back up again after, been, ha, you know, been settled for a couple months.
Yeah.
And me personally, I felt like he bought his way into getting his inspector license.
So the removal of members, the county executive may remove any member of the board for misconduct and competency, neglect of duty, or for any other sufficient cause, and unexcused failure to attend three consecutive meetings shall be deemed sufficient cause for removal. Do you fall under that?
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think so, I don't think anybody.
Didn't sound like it. So where do we go from here? We got to wrap this up. I think what we'll try to do is get something together that, um, sort of gives you a, a better answer on when the county's, needs to really codify state changes, okay? Um, whether it's, I mean, you said it seemed like it was going to be arbitrary about a year later, maybe we can establish some kind of guideline so that people can be held above, but one year after the state makes the changes, I don't know. What, whatever we do, we have to run by you guys. Anyway, second thing I think is you need to, you want, you want to, you want to establish acceptable, or guidelines for acceptable online education programs, is that right?
Yes.
You want to see that established. Third thing is legal counsel, we're going to have to talk to the legal counsel and just say, hey, this is a reminder that you certainly, if you feel that, um, this is something that's out of your, um, response or, or knowledge, that you seek out, uh, other assistance from an attorney that is familiar with, um, electrical, um, rules and regulations.
And my handbook.
He knew ahead of time, and it was like a couple weeks prior to the meeting, so it wasn't like he called him off guard like we called him and asked him to come in that afternoon.
He could have borrowed a handbook.
Well, he didn't have to have a handbook, but he had the ordinance, and again, the ordinance isn't that long, so I figured he probably could have read through it in a few minutes and figured it out, regardless. We appreciate your time and trouble.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Could I, could I ask one quick question while they're here? I'm, I'm just surprised that the Department of Planning and Zoning is even involved in this.
Yeah, it's, it's not in their bylaws.
Well, we asked, we asked a similar question. Well, but I mean, and also, that's not normally what they deal with, electrical, you know, it just, the whole thing, just, I'm scratching my head about that and wondering if that might not be a code change that could be considered. That's all I'll say right now.
We suggested to a couple of the county, um, members, council members about maybe asking, requiring about, um, listening to the tapes, because of tapes, the recordings, because we feel like that maybe they've been altered, uh, because when we looked at a number of the, um, minutes after we had had the, you know, the following month, um, there were nothing, they didn't reflect anything what we had actually had taken place into the meetings. And a couple times we had rejected the, um, minutes, but I think they've got past anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm always reading it, and when you read the language, it almost sounds like they just have a, what do you call it, like a ministerial duty, you get your permit if, if you're otherwise qualified, which they don't, shouldn't have any say on, and pay your money, whatever the fee is. I mean, it sounds almost like it's, you know, a lot of times, county treasurer would do that.
We were understanding too.
It's just an interesting.
They were trying to try to streamline, uh, the processes, and I'm thinking, you know, in a case like this, even with plumbing or building, either one, I would think, uh, construction side, you would want to streamline it to a large degree. Um, we weren't asking a lot, actually, when it came right down to it, uh, we were asking this gentleman to come in and test, and he refused to test, he wasn't going to do it. He says, you know, he says when he wanted to have the meeting, and that's when we contacted legal counsel, councils that come over, because we figured it was going to be a yearning contest, and we wanted to have somebody in our corner that knew the new offices of the electric, at least the legal side, so, anyway.
It's not unusual for a county department, though, to assist a county board or commission. Um, does the planning and zoning department provide administration to do the minutes for you guys?
They do, there's, uh, one of the two, or sometimes both, Ms. Courtney and, um, Courtney and, um, Samantha were there, and before that it was Debbie Taylor, I think it was, not Debbie Taylor, can't Debbie, yeah, more, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's just secretarial, I mean, this is more, this is more, um, quote official, let's put it that way. Yeah, it's, it seems as if the planning and zoning, it seems that they're in a position to supersede your authority. Yeah. That may be the issue.
Yeah, we're going to have to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here.
I was going to take a moment.
What can I say? At one fifteen.
Okay, next on the agenda is appointments to boards and commissions. We invited the county executive to attend, uh, they sent no, notice that neither one was going to attend. Um, so I think we need to have a quick discussion. Mr. Taylor, can you just go over who does the appointments by charter?
Well, under, under the charter, the, um, county executive is, is charged with the, uh, duty to appoint department heads and deputy department heads. Um, and then, of course, the council does confirmation. In the case of the deputy directors, it's just at one time, and then it continues on, they don't have to be, um, reappointed and reconfirmed after every election of the county executive. But, I mean, that's just clockwork essentially in, under the charter, but of course, it, it ain't, the, the clock stopped, it's not running, um, as of this past election in two thousand and eighteen, November.
I'll tell you, this, this, this thing with not getting a permit at the airport, that,